Commissioner's Citizens Advisory Committee for the City of Lowell for the regular meeting on Monday, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. Welcome. Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schravin.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers's accent and Chair Barker.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Oh, sure.
I don't have a motion to excuse, Marty.
Okay, in a second, and any discussion?
I think you did, and go for it.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Make a motion that he brings the candy next month?
Oh.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Stan's excused. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
In a second.
It's four.
And discussion? Sue?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schravin.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
And discussion? Sue?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schravin.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda, this would be not on the agenda. Anybody, Sue, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Old business, there is none, so we go to the new business, which is a site plan review for the YMCA ten seventy, North Hudson. I'm assuming you're Philip?
Yes.
Hi, Philip, would you please come on up and just give us your name, address, that sort of thing, and then just give us in, you know, five minutes or so, what you guys want to do.
Sure, my name's Phil Elazemay, Pure Architects, I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I'm here representing the YMCA of Greater Grand Rapids for this proposed children's childcare center, right, at their existing site at the lighthouse location just off the street here. So, they have an existing building that's currently being underutilized, and they would like to find a use for this building that can be an asset here in Lowell to residents here, so they have multiple successful childcare centers that they have, that they're operating throughout West Michigan, and this seems like a great fit. So, as we, in the packet, kind of outlined, just a brief narrative of some of the expectations as far as the number of children and staff, and when they'll be operating, the mobility, right, so really looking at fifty-six children, plus the twelve staff, zero to five years of age, kind of noting that the busiest pickup times and drop-off times are six AM, I'm sorry, seven AM to eight AM, is when the, when the site will see the most use for this particular project, so, just about that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Otherwise, we'll ask all of them to sit down.
Yeah, so this would be in addition to, do they still have the before and after school at Cherry Creek? Do you know that this would be an addition?
I would assume that this is in addition to anything, I don't know that for a fact, but I don't think any of them are changing any of their other operations.
Is it the same affiliation?
Yeah, it's a line, before and after school, that kids can go to Cherry Creek.
And this, so this, this being childcare, it's much more during the day, right, parents coming off kids, so it serves a separate function.
Zero to five, right?
Yep.
Years?
Okay, yeah, and the before and after school would be older kids, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Phil, we'll probably ask you some as we go through the process, Andy's going to read us through the process, and then we'll add, we'll do questions and answers as we go along.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, you want to walk us through?
Sure. So, this is, this is kind of an interesting site, it's been home to a few different uses over the years, and what's interesting about it is the property that actually have in the city and townships, so the property actually sort of splits the building itself like right down the middle, so the southern part of that YMCA building is, in the city of Lowell, the north half is in the general township, so several years ago, when the Y first moved here, we had to have sort of both the city and the township look at it together, and they both separately approved it. In this case, we're only dealing with the house that's on the far south end of that property, that's facing Lincoln Lake, and the way from Hudson is to come into town, and so it's, it's really just looking at reutilizing an existing building. Property is zoned PF, which is public facilities, that's typically reserved for government buildings, schools, churches, but there's a bunch of other uses there that are also permitted, and one of them is permitted by a right, are childcare centers. Typically, or not typically, but in some cases, those would be associated with something like the church, but they don't have to be up to this, obviously, so in this case, you know, we loved the zoning when the Y came in, because it used to be the impact church, I believe. When the Y came in, we decided to leave the zoning at it as is, because all kind of made sense to have a community center, which is also permitted in that same district, and so this is just kind of a continuation of that. There aren't any significant additions, alteration, directs, or changes to the building itself, not making it bigger, not making it taller, not doing anything to the building itself that really changes how it, how it functions on the site. One thing that we did notice is that, this comes up from time to time at some point, that applicant is looking to, you know, add something new to their properties, we have this issue of two uses on a lot, right, we already have a community center, now adding a daycare to that, so one of the things that I talked about in the report that we think about is this, moves forward as if this is sort of two uses on one lot, or if it's really one use, and the way that we look at it, because it's all going to be owned and operated and a part of the YMCA, you know, we think it's fine to include it and have it, allow it on that same parcel, they're not proposing any change to the parking area, the driveways would be shared, there's not any separate ownership of anything, so this all kinds of works and forms a single integral development. In terms of the building, so one of the things that jumps out right away is that in the public facilities district, there are some setback requirements, so the setback requirement for a daycare, it's not specifically listed as daycares, but any of the uses listed requires a sixty-foot, or sixty-foot, fifty-foot setback from an abutting residential zone, which would be in the south, and this house is only seven feet from the property line, but in section four point thirteen of the zoning ordinance, where it talks about non-conformities, here we allow for buildings or structures that don't fully comply to the provisions of the ordinance to be permitted to continue, provided that the use is in compliance with the section, so if they're taking a permitted use and putting it into an existing non-conforming building, we think that that's fine. We also know that there's a fenced area there that also is not fifty feet off of that property line, but the setback applies to buildings and fences are buildings, and so without getting too technical, we don't think that that applies here. We do note to the applicant, has proposed a larger, like a six-foot privacy fence along that southern property line where the play areas are going to be, we think that makes some sense just to provide a little additional protection for the neighboring property there. That is fenced, but it's just like a four-foot chain link fence on the site, and so this having a larger fence, I mean, just makes a lot of sense there.
There's actually two properties there, right?
Yeah.
One on Hudson and one on Lincoln Lake.
Yeah, I think the one on Lincoln Lake is the one that has the current fence, I'm not hundred percent on that, but there is certainly some fencing there, and if we make it proposal, that makes sense. There are a total of seventy-two spaces on the YMCA, YMCA site right now, zoning ordinance requires four spaces per person based on the licensed capacity, plus another six off-street queuing spaces. We're not sure what the total capacity of the, of the building is, and as you know, there's a ton of flexibility in the zoning ordinance when it comes to parking anyways. Typically, daycares, we don't see a lot of like queuing where parents, I mean, parents pull up and drop off their kids, but they do so by pulling into a spot and getting out and walking in. If you have a two-year-old, you're not going to just open the car door and say, all right, seal here, and just let him run into the building, right, the parents get out, park, and walk in, so a lot of the spaces that they have that are in front of that playground area there are likely going to be the ones that people will just pull into for five minutes, ten minutes, so during the morning, maybe in the evening, you pick up and drop off times is probably when this is going to generate the largest amount of traffic, maybe a little bit around midday, and some people if you have days with daycare.
How many, or what time does the main building open?
I don't know, do you know what time the Y opens?
I don't. I have those.
Is it five AM?
It's five AM.
I'm curious as to what the parking level is, I mean, you know, if more people come at ten thirty, or, you know, if it's right there during the prime time, then it becomes an issue.
Yeah, potentially, I mean, what they're using there are probably, some of them less convenient sites for the.
Building.
For, yeah, for the area itself, you know, generally keep parking parked up or closer to the actual building. So, it's not a huge concern of mine, but there is, you know, we kind of noticed that too, because the Y here isn't, it's not a huge building, and because the parking lot that they're proposing is going to be probably the busiest one, it's that southerly parking area that's as far away from the main building as you can almost possibly get, so if they're going to use any parking spaces or what they're proposing here, it probably makes a lot of sense.
One other quick question, sorry about this. I think there's two garage doors on Lincoln Lake side, are those usable? Are they closed off?
Sure. Sure. So, on the packet, what we're looking at, you can see on the elevation here, we're indicating that those two garage doors will be infilled with a material that matches, complements the existing building, we've all seen the, right, the garage that then becomes used as like a third space in a home, so I think it still kind of looks like a garage, that's not, the intent here, right, is to close it off so that it looks like it's a continuous piece.
Continuation, so they will not be used?
No. Nope. The garage doors will be completely removed, put some windows in there and make it look nice. Okay, got you.
Thank you.
Only other comments we had on the site here, there's no frontage landscaping required, there's not any landscaping required for the parking area, but not supposed to change that, and then as far as lights are concerned, fixtures have to be downward facing and fully cut off, poles themselves can't exceed that height of twenty feet, but they don't think they exceed that height now, but if they do anything with, with the fixtures, they would just have to have a model that's compliant with the zoning ordinance, and that's really easy to do. So, with the site plan review standards, as we've been through a number of times, we have standards A through F, do you have any to go through these one at a time, Mr. Chairman?
I think we will take them all at one time, I do have a question for them, I guess. I see there's fifty-six children, and looking at the size of the house, obviously, they can't be outside all the time into play areas, I get, I get that, and just as obviously they're not there all at the same time, is that, is that the assumption, or, and then it also has to be okayed by the state, correct?
Correct.
Give me some background there, because it just seemed like fifty-six kids.
Yeah.
In that little, in that house, I mean, it's not a huge house.
No, it's not, but.
Yeah, it just seemed like an awful lot of kids.
Sure. So, the, the, that number is derived from state licensing rules as far as the square footage allowances in each room, so, no, it's not that big of a home, no, it's not a home, right, but the, but using that, like converting that garage into one large open space greatly increases the size of it, so it's actually closer to about four thousand total usable square feet, because there is also a basement on it, so with that occupancy being set, that's like a, it's minimum number of children per, per foot that they're requiring to use that, right, so that, so you don't, that you're sizing those rooms appropriately, so those rooms are sized appropriately by state guidelines for that.
Okay, doesn't the question, I mean, changing a range style house into a, there's obviously the state of Michigan has guidelines on this.
Absolutely.
They were necessarily outlined in our thing, but they're noted, and you were going to follow the guideline, is it? Well, I mean, I'd say there's strong good guidelines, does it have to be licensed to have a daycare center, either group or center like this, so their requirements are minimum standards. Fifty-six infants, I was like, oh, that's.
Yeah.
And there's also requirements for like the number of kids.
Per staff.
Per staff, per ratio.
One staff, person per six, I think it's the standard, so I'd hope they do four, if I remember correctly.
Right, and, and, thank you for correcting me, their licensing rules, actually, I mean, like at the. Yeah, not gotten, so thank you for that. But that's how that's, and to your point, this, this home is being renovated, how it is Cassidy, we have here with construction, he's helping to split that piece of, and there's, so the whole interior is being reconfigured to be able to maximize the usual square footage of these spaces, it's not like small, like taking just a room, a small bedroom in a home, and then putting on.
So, you don't have an extra large room for time off?
I don't know. We could have that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioners, any other questions before we start the standards? Then, like we have done in the past, we'll do the site plan review standards A through F, I believe it is?
Yep.
And we'll do them all at once, and then we'll, we can go through each one and pull it on them, or we can take them and pull it on them all at once, either way you want to do it, so we can, we'll reconnoitre at that point, and go from there. Andy, you want to go first?
Yep. The first standard is that the uses proposed might affect public health, safety, or welfare, uses and structures shall be planned to take into account the size of the property, et cetera, and the site will be developed so as to not be亂ly, normal and orderly in development or improvement of property. This is an existing building on a previously developed site, don't really anticipate any, any changes or negative impacts as far as that's concerned, whether it's the building itself or how it relates to other buildings. They're going to put up a fence along the neighboring property line, so we don't think this is going to have a significant impact on neighboring property either. Item B, safe, convenient, uncongestion, and well-defined pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress and ingress points within the site, the drive streets, et cetera, shall be designed to promote safe and effi-, safe and efficient, using attractive operations within the site, again, no curb cuts, what they have there is fine, pedestrian circulation is generally safe, there are sidewalks on both sides of the property, and then they're proposing a sidewalk to connect to Lincoln Lake from the building itself, so if someone just wants to walk instead of drive, they can do that and will have a sidewalk connection that gets them to the building. Item C, the arrangement of public or private vehicular or pedestrian connections to existing or planned streets shall be provide, shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic within the city, again, same comment there, so it's all existing, there's, the sidewalk connection is planned, which will facilitate traffic and at least provide a solid option for people on foot. Item D, removal or alteration of significantly natural features shall be restricted to those areas reasonably necessary to develop the site, nothing is being removed, it's basically just an open area right now. The most significant change would probably be those two fenced areas that are on the east and west parts of the building, you note that they have four-foot fences proposed, except for that six-foot privacy fence that's along the southern boundary, I wear the bus ten forty-three on Lincoln Lake and ten fifty-two North Hudson, there is no landscaping proposed, no clean belts, no buffers other than the fence, obviously continual maintenance of that fence would be required, so if, I don't know what would happen if a tree falls on it or something, that breaks the fence or damages something, they have to repair it just like anybody else. Item E, satisfactory assurances shall be provided that the requirements of all other applicable ordinance's closing requirements will be met, which is typically addressed under the condition of approval, we note here, as we discussed a second ago, that the state of Michigan does issue an actual license for these types of operations, with the smaller family daycares, where there is six or fewer kids, there's simply a registration involved, but there's not an actual license issued by the state, when you get from seven to twelve, which is a group home or a daycare center such as this one, there is a license that is granted, there's inspections and things like that, and there are administrative rules that shall be followed, so obviously that would be baked into the condition of approval here, which is suggested, and we'll get to the rest of it as we go. Last item, item F, is that the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and comprehensive plan will be maintained. With respect to the ordinance goes, the PF, public facilities district includes protecting public and semi-public uses and institutions from encroaching with certain other uses, making it compatible with adjoining residential uses, so, not sure about Lowell specifically, but a lot of communities where we work have sort of noted a serious deficiency in childcare options in general, so we're pleased to see this here in the city, at its end of the location, it's convenient, everyone knows where the Y is, it's near a residential neighborhood, so it should be a workable option for a lot of people. And as far as the national plan is concerned, the properties in a single and two-family future land use category, which is intended generally to accommodate residential uses, indigenous schools, churches, municipal buildings, civic buildings, et cetera, so community center kind of fits in with that neighborhood character that's being talked about here, and I think a daycare that's accessory to that certainly satisfies that thing here too. So, those are the six standards, we've recommended approval, we'll get the conditions in a minute once you vote on those six, Mr. Chairman.
I would propose that we vote on all six at one time, does anybody have a problem with doing that?
I think there's not a whole lot.
Right, then if not, I will open up the discussion for A through F, if there's any questions or anything along that line. Seeing on, and I will make a motion that we accept the site plan review standards A through F, as, as mentioned here, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schravin.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Then at this point, we'll have Andy go over our recommendations for the necessary conditions.
So, we have five conditions proposed, the first two are pretty standard, prior to the issuance of any permits, they have paid fees, permit fees, escrow fees, et cetera, to continuously comply with applicable ordinances, codes, and requirements of the city of Lowell, and proof of licensure as a childcare facility shall be provided, so once they get that license from, they just layer the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, they'll just have to get a copy to sue, the new exterior lighting shall be approved by the zoning enforcement officer and comply with lighting standards, as I read this, they're just going to have new fixtures on them, not the whole thing whole entirely, so all they probably have to do there is just submit like a one-page cut sheet that shows us the type of fixture that's being proposed, we just check those to make sure that they're downward facing especially lights. Yep, and they'll be angled in the right, in the right place, they're, they're pretty, pretty simple, and I don't anticipate that being an issue. The site is, shall comply with chapter twenty of the city zoning ordinance, and then any all landscaping and screening shall be continuously maintained in good condition, to ensure the proposed uses will be adequately buffered from one another and from strong and valid private property, really not any formal landscaping proposed, this mostly applies to the fence, so if anything happens to the fence, we'd just like to see that maintained in, in good condition, particularly the part along the southern property line where that's going to be the most.
The successful effect.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's it.
Quick question, is there a time frame that we're looking at?
A time frame for the project?
Yeah.
We're looking at finishing construction drawings here in the next month, and Cassidy, could you maybe speak to completion of the project? I'm trying to pull up that schedule real quick. Once construction's complete, there'll be a few, few days, a few weeks of turnover to the owner, right, to kind of be used to the right, to the end building. So, we're looking at, if we can get through all this, May first start, I think I might add that just in there as a temporary to end of July finish.
Okay. We're out, we're out, somebody in the center. Lights on. Okay, thank you. I would make the motion then that we accept the YMCA childcare facility site plan as is with the five conditions as outlined by Andy. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
And discussion?
I got one thing, Bruce.
Yeah.
I don't know if parking is an issue, but could we, do we have to do anything like with the driveway up here to make that, like, additional two or three spots that staff could use, I guess, if parking's going to get a major issue?
Up, up at the.
Yeah, where the drive, where the garage, yeah, where the garage was, I mean, do we, do we need a special allowance for that or anything, or just let it go?
It's going to be fenced in, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's going to be a play area.
Never mind that.
Yeah.
Our budget.
If, if in the future, there's a, there is a, there are new developments on the site, they could, that is certainly potentially an option for them to make that area smaller, you might be able to get a few off-street spots there, there might be, we haven't looked at it in great detail, but there also might be different ways that they can figure the parking lot overall to get a few more on there, but that's something that we can sort of evaluate moving forward, I don't anticipate there being a huge problem, and again, be a few high turnover times, again, probably at about seven to eight, and then again, at, you know, four, three, or five, till six, and the rest of the time, they're not, if they have this thing, you know, to.
And, any other questions or thoughts? Sue, roll call then?
Commissioner Cadwalder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schravin.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Congratulations, the YMCA childcare facilities, A plan is approved. Start building. Thanks, guys. Staff report, Sue, anything?
I have nothing.
Andy?
We have a couple things coming up for the next meeting, we'll have at least one site plan coming up for the May meeting, and we are going to be taking a look at, so several years ago, we had worked on revisions to the sign chapter, we're going to get back into that, and provide a clean and updated draft, that we're, use all the content-based language out of there, so we'll be taking a look at signs probably next month as well, along with the site plan.
Second, third time?
Couple times, so, yeah, it's, we got through it, we sent it to the attorneys, they took a while to get back, there's been some other things that'll come up, so we'll get it ironed out in the next, next month. I think that's about it.
Commissioners, Mike?
I'm good.
Good?
I already, I already have something.
Good.
Could we get eleven by seventeen per ounce, color per ounce?
Sure.
To keep here for city council, and for us?
Yeah.
You just have to.
Make them permanent.
Yeah, laminated or something, so they sit here, so when, yeah, we can just run a machine and bring them next, next time up here, but can we get them laminated today? So, Marty doesn't scribble in mine.
Sure.
Keep the last two years magic, Marty. You can handle laminated if you opt, so if you get laminated, we'll, I can check it out.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amanda?
Oh, Andy, oh.
I can bring the school.
By the way, I don't know if anybody saw it, but on the front page of the ledger last week, Tony was featured, his class on media, I believe it is, and the comments were best teacher ever, things like that. So big, big, big applause for Tony.
Bruce told me about it tonight on the.
What? Where? I think a little ledger will laminate it for you.
Thank you.
I think that should be story number one later on in the week here. All right, Amanda?
I can't do anything on that, so.
I just have one thing, and we have a meeting here, seven o'clock on Wednesday. It is on Wednesday, the twelfth, and that's our combined meeting with the Lowell and Virgin Township and the city. Obviously, we'd like to have Andy there if he can make it, I guess, and, and all of that. Sue, all of the commissioners, they all know that they've been invited three times now, so, but if you would, pick them and tell them, come on, screaming or whatever. We would love to have them, seriously. Obviously, there's a lot of big things going on with the water condition, not the flooding, but needing water, and what they're going to do with that whole thing, the, the new fire department kind of configuration that they have to. So it's, it's important that we get together and somehow make sure everybody gets their say and at least has a, a notion as to what's going on with the surrounding communities. It is, it is important, frankly. I think it'll help us as we're redoing our master plan, because we'll, we'll have some insight as to what their thinking is on some of these issues, and hopefully it will help us too, so. Hopefully, we'll see you there, and with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I stand adjourned. Thanks, guys.